Well, six thirty. Good evening. Welcome to the school board meeting. If you would please and are able to, please stand for the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Always love these for Shirley because these are good things. We'd like to recognize Charlie Schwank and the Riddle Running Club.
Charlie, if you would, and I know that more family participated than I don't.
And Kristen Pitt participated, and, most importantly, Janet Bance participated.
Let's not talk about that one. But I just wanted to share that we had a phenomenal time down at the 5K in Indianapolis and to see two buses depart of, did we really leave at four in the morning?
Yes.
At four in the morning with those buses loaded and the most, the best thing was she is, first of all, is the only person who can talk me into not only getting up at four in the morning, but actually trying to do a 5K at four in the morning. But we had, and I wish she could have been here, I had this little girl come up to me and hold my hand and she said, "Where are you going to be in the group?" And I said, "At the very, very end," and she said, "You can do this." And I think that that was shared, but it was just that, in all seriousness, it was that mentality that you can do this, that we're going to get through this. And then to see Charlie at the end, and she had been there for a while by the time I got there, to congratulate everybody and to give hugs and to give that word of encouragement and to know that that is building our programs, our cross-country and our track programs at the middle school and at the high school. And Charlie, if you'll share other things that you were engaged in with the running club. I know it goes much further than just the 5K, but you've got things coming up this Friday and so would you mind sharing just a little bit about what you're doing at Riddle?
Do you want me to stand?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we have 114 students in grades three, four, and five who participate twice a week and they just come to run. And they say, "Well, what are we going to do?" And I go, "Well, we're probably going to run tonight." And I go, "Okay, that sounds like what we want to do." They're so enthusiastic and I think the amount of parent support that we had this year, we had 45 parents who enjoyed their four o'clock trip with us in the morning and to have them finish with their kids. We had a grandma who finished with her grandson. And to think that we're building that kind of relationship and that idea that, yes, everybody can do it and I can keep doing it. I don't have to stop when I'm 60 or 70 or even 80. I don't have to stop. I can keep on going. And these kids are getting the idea that they can go farther now. They thought one lap around the blacktop was going to be a big trip, but now they're doing eight laps around the blacktop without even complaining. And to think that we're just planting that little seed. If we just get a few of them to keep on doing it and keep that healthy lifestyle, I think that we will have accomplished a goal that we did, started with kids who graduated last year. So we've been doing it a long time and I wouldn't, I don't think I'd do anything else with my time after school.
Well, thank you. And I've told everybody, if I knew there were cookies at the end of the race, I probably would have cut a little more time off, but I seriously thank you because it was a really neat experience and just to be surrounded by that support and to know that you can do it and to hear the kids reiterate that is what it's all about.
And the good news is, I've already signed up for next year already. So that was the first thing they wanted to do was, are we going to do it again? And every one of the students raised their hand and said, "I want to go back." Even our fifth graders, I told them if they have a sibling in third or fourth grade or coming into third grade next year, I said, "You are welcome to come back with us as long as that sibling isn't running club." And so I have several who want to keep on coming. And I have such wonderful parents who've come. Jenny and Brody have done it two years now with their kids and I think I might have hoped them, they might come back next year even though Peyton won't be there anymore. But we'll let Peyton come back if Mom and Dad do it. Is that okay? You too, Molly.
Thank you so much for your work on that. That was really a neat event.
Elizabeth ran it too. Now, the Weaver boys are like their father. They don't run. We might sign Lain for it, but well done, Charlie.
Thank you.
And thanks for being on the board. I hear great things about it.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to consent items. Minutes of the April 17, 2017 regular board meeting. Are there any additions or deletions or comments? Ted, do we want to do these all together or should we do them separately?
All together.
Minutes of the May 3, 2017 study session. Any additions, comments, deletions? And minutes of the May 3, 2017 special board meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments? In that case, is there a motion to approve the consent items as given?
Motion to approve consent?
A second.
Motion made by Tom, the second was by Sandy?
Nope.
Oh, Jenny, I'm sorry, Jenny. Motion by Tom, second by Jenny. All in favor of approving the consent items, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Onto the financial report.
So tonight, we have claims dock at 11,269 to 11,440. Total's $1,557,145.99. We have a few payrolls as well. We've got the April 28 payroll that totaled $415,832.56 and the May 12 payroll that totaled $432,308.05. And then we also have our funds reports, going through the funds that we operate from primarily. We've got the general fund that started with $486,908.35, had $1,018,770.69 worth of receipts. Expenditures for the month were $888,138.70, leaving an ending balance of $617,540.34. Any questions on general fund? Moving on to debt service. We started with $1,870,860.36. We had receipts that totaled $9,522.80 through property tax revenue credits. And then we did not have any expenditures, but watch out for June because coming up in June next month is when we pay our debt service amounts. So that'll be next month. So we had an ending balance of $1,883,833.16 for debt service. Capital projects fund had a starting balance of $475,022.77, $4,447.67 worth of receipts. Expenditures for the month total $188,937.32, leaving us an ending balance of $294,533.12. And we get funds again for debt service, capital projects, transportation and bus replacement. We get those funds twice a year, so that'll be June and December that we get more tax levies from there. Did you have a question?
Sure. So it looked like we spent about $200,000 in capital projects. Is there a reason or wouldn't it work to take that money from bond money since we have the bond projects or went to capital project for certain items?
Those items that are, that have come out of capital projects, some of that is for ongoing repairs and maintenance throughout the district. The bond funds that we use, or I should say, the debt service is to repay our current outstanding bonds and then the bond funds that we have now, the 2015 bonds that we're using for the high school and the middle school and the Columbia projects, those are dedicated for those HVAC improvements. When we issued the bonds in 2015, we told those shareholders, "This is what we're going to spend, these funds for is this HVAC project." So if we were to mitigate and go in circumvent around the process and do other things for it, that would not be very fiducially irresponsible. You're welcome.
So part of this difference is, and you have note there, right, that we paid the last Apple lease payment.
We did.
So when is the next Apple payment?
Next Apple, the first one that we started with, we're going to, instead of a bi-annual lease payment, we were able to secure a lower interest rate on this new round by transitioning to a once-a-year payment. And that first one will start in June and then it'll be every June for four years.
Okay, so there will be another hit next month, but then it will...
Well, and we have tax revenues to help offset that cost as well. Plus, we're selling our previously used devices as well. So lots of options. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On to transportation funds. Started with $949,638.27. We had $2,240.66 worth of receipts. That comes from local property taxes. Month-to-date expenses were $44,487.48, leaving us an ending balance of $907,391.45. Questions for transportation? Moving on to bus replacement, last but not least. So this is the fund that we can utilize to obtain new buses. We started with $239,795.96. We had $610.62 worth of receipts. No expenditures because we haven't purchased our buses yet, leaving us an ending cash balance of $240,406.58. Any questions on the fund report this afternoon? That's all of it?
I had a question on the payroll. I think it was the first one. Were there stipends paid in that one?
There's, some of the coaching stipends are paying out. Some of the athletic and academic UCA payrolls are ongoing. Those are, as a department, done for those.
Any further questions for Val? In that case, is there a motion to approve the claims 11,269 to 11,440, the payroll and the funds report?
So moved.
Motion made by Sandy. Second by Steve. All in favor of approving those, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to the students, stakeholder focus. Now, we have these donations. Are there additions before I start? Or just these three donations?
I always look to candy, but I believe that those are all that we have.
And before I start on those, last meeting, we thanked RTC so much for their coverage of us and we really do appreciate it. I also was remiss in not thanking the Sentinel. And I know Christina's not here, but I want to tell her thank you for the positive support we receive in having the Rochester Sentinel in our meeting. So while she's not here, I wanted to say thank you on that. Guess I could have timed that better, couldn't I? She can watch it on RTC 4.
Also, along that, WROI does a wonderful job of allowing us that weekly report that we do get a lot of comments and feedback. So we're in a community that has a lot of media support and that helps with the marketing and getting the message out.
And when we do state-level things, that is something that is rare and other boards talk about that they are surprised with.
So thank you to RTC, TV4, WROI, and the Rochester Sentinel. And they'll have to watch it on RTC 4 now.
Did you have anything?
No, I'm with the Sentinel.
Oh, okay.
Christina couldn't make it, but...
She's usually right there. I couldn't see you back there. So thank you very much.
Me, I'm the intern.
On that note, we always say the thank you, but we're going to ask for approval on these donations. Anonymously, one student's beef and board's field trip for $40. Country lanes, free bowling for all first and second grade PE classes. And the Fulton County Solid Waste District to RMS for $500. Is there a motion to approve those donations as given?
So moved.
Movement moved by Jenny?
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the donation as given, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much again for your donors. I want to say that every week or every month, but it truly is important. We sincerely do appreciate it. On to overnight field trips.
Adam, would you like to share in regards to either of the field trips? We have the State OFFA convention and I know that that's an annual opportunity where they can address public communications, their projects, those types of things. And then the other is a cross-country field trip. Both Alan Sager and Scott Skalbong, typically I believe that they have taken six overnight field trips. Allows them the chance to run different courses, build teamwork, just spend the time together. And we've had those without incident as well. Adam, I don't know if you have any additional information?
I guess I sounded up there.
Guess that's a no. Okay, then, is there a motion to approve the overnight field trips as given?
So moved.
Movement, first motion made by Steve?
Seconded.
Second by Jenny. All in favor of approving overnight field trips, raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Information and analysis, bylaw 100.
Okay, bylaw 100 is at, these are third readings. So after I read these, I would ask Brad to entertain a motion to adopt them. The bylaw 100 is adding language to include school psychologists under the definition of a teacher. The other policies that we have, and they have been available on our website, on the front page of our website, if anyone has any questions or would like to look those over. Those are policies 1411, 3211, and 4211. They add language for the protection of whistleblowers and it is a different way to report in case it's someone who feels like the superintendent is the one that needs to be reported and the board at the same time. 2221 clarifies the mandatory curriculum schools must teach and the role that the superintendent may play or must play. 3120.06 is that for a student teacher to be placed under a supervisory teacher, that supervisory teacher must have an evaluation rating of effective or highly effective. 3140 and 3141 separate resignation and termination language into two separate policies. 3142 incorporates state law which provides that boards can vote to terminate once they have complied with and followed due process. 3220 has been redefined to match Indiana code around teacher and staff evaluations. 5320 changes the wording to allow for parents to select a nurse practitioner or a county health nurse to provide immunizations. Previously, it said a doctor, but this is understanding the reality of our healthcare field. It also adds immunizations for meningitis as required. 7310 gives local control as to how to dispose of textbooks. 8455 defines concussion training, another tweak to that that we've been working on. 8500 provides the school provide, says that we must provide breakfast for students, which we do. And 8600, which aligns Indiana code that state's public schools will provide the needed transportation for students who live in the district but elect to attend a private or charter school. As long as we are running that route, we must pick them up and do that. And these are all policies that have required little discussion or debate because they're basically complying with law, which we must do.
Any comments or questions of Jenny? Is there a motion for, to approve bylaw 100 in the third reading of those policies?
I make that motion.
Stacy made the motion.
I seconded.
Sandy seconded. All in favor of approving those, please raise your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Matt, textbook adoption.
Well, just as Jenny was talking about disposal of textbooks, we'll be adopting textbooks this evening, hopefully. As you recall, last year was the math textbook adoption for the district. There was some transition going on with administration at Columbia and so Mr. Snyder contacted me and wanted to make sure that they were in alignment and that he had a chance to work with teachers in regards to that. And at that time, we agreed that we would look at his math textbook adoption for this year even though we're a bit off-cycle, so.
And if you want to scroll down to our next one. We obviously began this process last year. I've got two ladies here that have been involved in this from the very beginning, Kim Beal and Alyssa Ramsey. Kim is in first grade, Alyssa is in second grade. And the bottom line was at the end of the year last year, we did not have a comfortable number-one program that we felt met the needs of our students. So that's why we put it off for another year. And part of the mention of that is that these ladies and the ladies listed up there also were a part of this, again, taking two years. They didn't sign up for it for two years. They were, they only wanted to do it once in one year and I had them do it twice. And I'm very grateful for that because I felt like it was very thorough. You can see that we researched or piloted and piloted numerous different textbooks. If you'll go ahead and go down to the next slide. We are recommending that we adopt the Ready, iReady Math. And go down to the next slide. The basic program involves three different portions. A diagnostic portion, an instructional portion, and a online instructional portion. The diagnostic piece is very important to us in that it gives us the data to drive our instruction and we feel like we're lacking that at this point. We do gather data in our math and the teachers do a fantastic job, but this program aligns and tells the teachers exactly where every student is and what they're ready for. Our teachers teach in a lot of groups and stations. Many traditional math programs are more classroom-focused where every student is getting the same instruction. We believe that just like in our reading program where we're having tremendous success at our level, that our math program needs to be in line with that. So we want to build our math program to look a lot like our reading program and focus on the students' needs versus just a whole classroom need. By getting these other two portions, the diagnostic piece and the online piece, that gives our teachers the flexibility to model the math program to look a lot like our stations and our groups that we do in our reading program. Want to go down to the next slide? Each one of these, it's a bundle package. The diagnostic, the personalized e-learning piece and the classroom instruction are all bundled into one package. You can purchase them separately. However, if you purchase the entire program as presented tonight, it ends up being a lot cheaper for us and for our corporation. I'm not going to go through every one of those, but that's just some data and some information about each part of it. Do you guys have anything you want to say on that slide there specifically?
Not on that one.
I figured the next two, you guys are on for sharing some of that.
Well, the next one just kind of goes over, this is just straight from the iReady website. It just kind of gives you some more details about each one. But if you go to the next one, that's probably the one that I'm most excited about because these are actual scores and data from my specific class this year. We had the iReady representative come in. We gave Alyssa's class and my class the diagnostic at the middle of the year. And what we found is, I have the high ability cluster in first grade. Our scores were not near as where we thought they should be. We weren't showing anybody ahead of middle of the year first grade. So it was very shocking for us. But then after we did the iReady program for the next three weeks, they say eight minutes a day is basically kind of what you aim for. And we started to see tremendous growth. You can see kind of right there just a snapshot of, you know, most students are in green and then we've got some yellow. No one was in red after we kept working.
And do you want to clarify, eight minutes a day?
No, eight minutes a day would be, well, what he was saying, our math, we like to do stations. So we have three to four in a second-grade desk floor. We do three stations where the teacher is at one station and we differentiate. So we have small groups where we're meeting them at their level. And then we have an iPad station. And that's really where we've been lacking is we've been looking for that perfect digital tool that will meet them where they're at and this is what does that. So, you know, one station, they could be working at their own pace. If they are in first grade, but they're at a third grade level, great. There are those kids that are still working at kindergarten levels and that's great because it meets them where they're at. And then we've got, you know, some other desk stations as well.
Thanks. We're not going to just teach math for you. We're not opposing that.
iReady.
Do you want to give the next slide, please?
Oh, this just shows you that, this is an individual student. And so the very left part is where they started at middle of the year and then where they ended. This is literally three weeks of work. So they started at the beginning of the blue line and they ended at the right side of the blue line in just three weeks' time. We saw growth. And what we really like about it is it's so interactive and it's not like the same old boring practice. There's characters and they were excited to do it every single day. "Are we going to do iReady?" And then when our pilot ended, they were all bummed.
So for our recommendation, we would like to adopt iReady for next year. We feel those reasons there are several reasons. Bottom line is, is that after two years of looking, we feel like this one is best for our students. One of the advantages that we have had by waiting a year is that there were several schools in the area. Tewa Valley is one example that you ladies actually met with their administration and teachers. They had a year's worth of work in using this program and we got a lot of really good feedback from them. And we also, during this entire process, I mean, spoke with other schools about what they had adopted and, you know, issues and concerns that they had had after a year as well. And that's our recommendation. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to.
So are these actual textbooks or is this all digital?
Go ahead.
It's both. There's a book part and then the iPad part.
The instructional, the three phases that I showed you. The instructional piece is the textbook piece. The assessment piece is the assessment that we give three times and take that data. And then the iReady piece is the iPad digital piece. So there are textbooks as well.
So if I'm envisioning this correctly, you teach the school whole class and then break into four math stations and move around and iReady will be a component of one station?
Right. And it's fit to that specific child. It fills all their gaps.
So this doesn't necessarily come with manipulatives or anything else. You would use your own and fill that in in the other three.
And one of the advantages, I'm glad you mentioned the manipulative piece, is that over the course of the last, I don't know how many, eight years probably that you guys have been using what you're using, they have accumulated a lot of manipulatives and additional equipment and things to be able to do this without, we don't feel like a need to necessarily go out and buy a bunch of stuff, which sometimes you have to do. I think we're in pretty good shape and I think these ladies and the teams would agree that we've got what we need to implement this without any additional costs.
And K through two?
No, one through two.
Just one through two, okay.
Kindergarten is opting to not adopt anything at this time. They have developed their curriculum based on their standards and with the kids that are coming in and the need that they have, they feel like the program that they've got is sufficient and that they don't need to spend extra money to do that. So, and, you know, I mean, we are trying to be fiscally responsible in terms of, you know, the iPads. They have, they have like station, I mean, iPads, they're not one wanting kindergarten anyways. So, you know, spending their additional money on some of that stuff is, they didn't feel like they needed that at this time. So they were given the opportunity to do it like every other grade, but they feel very comfortable with what they've got in mind.
And I appreciate that fiduciary responsibility too and waiting a little bit to decide what was the best fit and best for students and best for your staff instead of rushing to do something.
I will tell you that when we went to the textbook caravan last year, this was our first, this was our first fit. And then we went to talk to them and we were like, "Oh, it's kind, you know, I don't know." And so it was just nice to have that year and talk to Akron and Goshen. Those teachers were excited about it and that's kind of what helped get us a little bit more excited.
How does the cost compare to what we had had before?
It's a little more expensive. It's about $32 per student. However, with the diagnostic piece, we are looking to use the formative assessment grant that we've got to cover that third of it. On the I portion of it, the internet or the online portion, we are looking to reduce some of the subscriptions in some of our current programs that we've got that we aren't getting the use out of, maybe not getting the monetary gain out of that we currently have to cover that third of it. So I'm going to throw this number out. We'll nail it down more because we don't know the formative assessment piece, how much that will actually work out. But we're figuring about a nine to $10 per student, maybe up to 12-ish for... But we're figuring about a nine, nine to $10 per student, maybe up to 12-ish for textbook additional.
Is that total over the cost of six years, or is that per year?
That's every year. They get a new textbook. You asked about the textbooks. They get, every student gets a new textbook.
And updated, and the teacher textbooks, if they ever update standards, because they recently just made the Indiana standards back from the Common Core. Teachers will get a new teacher guide every year.
And the students also?
And students also.
Yep.
Every year.
Get that textbook every year as well.
Has second grade had an opportunity to meet with third grade to see how this will transition yet?
We met last, or no, we met, I don't know how long ago it was, to discuss about, you know, the program that they were using, because we were still looking. And based on the feedback that we received, we didn't really feel that that was the best direction for us to go. We are actually meeting tomorrow at 1500 to...
At 3:00 AM, while you're sleeping.
To do a handoff of our second graders to our third grade team, to include a data dump, if you want to call it that, but to provide them with as much information about their students as we possibly can, and to also align, talk about the alignment of our curriculum. And I don't know that that's something that's happened enough, and we're making sure that we're getting, having those communications with our counterparts at middle, so that will take place again tomorrow.
That is fabulous. That's something that we've needed for a while, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration. Thanks, ladies.
Is there a motion for the math textbook adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Sandy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom. Tom in favor of approving the Columbia math book adoption, it's signified by reasonable rating, please. Motion carries six to zero. And on to science.
People start with Riddle and Luke on science. It is the science adoption year, and I believe that our choices were very, very limited. It came down really to maybe two products.
We took a look at three. I'm not going to wow you with a slideshow like Columbia, but I will try with my verbal articulation here. We attended, our science teachers attended a caravan in January over at Plymouth, where all the textbook providers were there. They narrowed it down to three. McGraw-Hill, Pearson, and then also the Purdue Science Initiative, which is kind of a fairly new product out there that had like STEM kits and things like that, to where the curriculum was based around that. Then, meeting with the committee with their science teachers and Mrs. Smith, we narrowed it down to two, Pearson and the Purdue Science Kits, and then got it down, down to Pearson finally, because they also had the Science Kits, but also met the, what our teachers were looking for as far as the curriculum and the reading content. It had that as well. So Pearson offers the digital package, our textbooks, as well as the Science Kits, which offer group work and the STEM activities that a lot of our teachers are already doing in their classrooms with their own materials, but it'll build it around the particular units in the science as well. Want to pass it off to Mrs. Murphy here briefly, if she wants to add anything to that?
Yeah, like you said, we can pull it into our reading much easier than what we're using now. It's really well-aligned to the standards, which is really important in fourth grade, because we test science. The kit, the experiments are actually meaningful. They really go along with what you're teaching. The assessments are a lot better than what we have been using, so overall, we just really liked it a lot.
The thing about our assessments, the assessments seem to test more standards, but won't take as much time for us to test, which we do a lot of testing, so that would be very familiar with the case. The textbook itself, a workbook and a textbook in one, it's very friendly to them, so we were excited about that. Oh, the reading portion to the... There's so many days where some of the classrooms, if something gets pushed aside, it's science, and so it's really hard for us to see that happen. So this program is very friendly to even or push into reading and simple classroom Helpful in our day.
Any questions?
Did you collaborate with middle school, or did you guys work together on the science curriculum as far as how they integrate or not?
Didn't collaborate in that way. Talked to Mr. Hollis about what the middle school adopted. We didn't adopt the same textbook series that they did.
Are the kits replenished each year?
Yes, we talked about it, because the textbook that they said is actually consumable. I think we do that with one of our other textbooks. I know math has that as well.
Middle school has math.
And so without cost, that is replenished every year. So that quote that you see there is with the new textbook that students will get every year.
And then the decision was made for each student to have one, then you're not going to share that?
Correct. Yep, each student will have their own textbook.
And how does that compare now when you move to our previous science?
The, I don't know about our previous science cost. Doing the quick math here, it looks like it's about between $18, $19 a student per year over six years.
Is that comparable value?
Okay, so we're about the same.
And we are working on textbook rental fees. We want to bring those to you in early June, but it was difficult to do that without the approval of the board for textbooks. So everything that we're bringing to you would be very close in alignment to what we've had in the past, knowing that we're trying to, as Jason said, look at programs, look at those apps and stuff, to try to not duplicate and to take those costs down and to use the assessment grants and those types of things. So we're, every number we're bringing to you is well within what we've done in the past. It was just hard to bring that in conjunction with the adoption process as well, until we had your approval on that. But nothing you're seeing would be unreasonable, other than the ones on past costs.
I don't have to ask that question again.
Do we want to do middle school together, or would you rather keep them separate?
However, however you'd like.
Would you, would you like, would you guys like to separate out middle school from grade school, or we want Misty to present, or would we just move forward? Let's just move forward unless there's any objection.
Mr. Hollis, middle school science?
This is very late.
Understaligation at its finest.
Other principals gave a nice look.
You're funny. Great. One of the things that my team and I looked at was what was best for kids. So we used a rubric that the middle school math teachers used the year before to adopt their math, and we just kind of adapted it and edited it for our needs. We looked at things like, does this textbook include standards that we cover? Are there learning activities that are appealing to kids that also work with 21st century skills? Does it review previously learned skills? Does it provide opportunities for differentiation, enrichment, reinforcement, remediation? We also were concerned about, the current curriculum that we use is fantastic with being inquiry-based, but we were a little disappointed with the differentiation in the reading skills. So that was something that we added. We did find that the grade, the reading level is appropriate for grade level, but we can differentiate it. We chose McGraw-Hill as well. I collaborated, or my team and I collaborated with the high school in talking about what needs they had that our kids were lacking when they got to high school. They too are leaning towards McGraw-Hill the last I knew. We chose McGraw-Hill for a number of reasons. Kids can change their reading level on the text. It is updated frequently. It, you can, it's downloaded over their iPad, plus they can have a hard copy for those students that like a hard copy better. There are ready-to-go lesson plans. There's virtual labs, which I loved, but yet there's still hands-on inquiry-based labs. So that's another form of differentiation, and it's also a form of getting kids ready for the future, those virtual labs. So so many jobs out there that use that, being surgeons, nurses, and military, things of that nature. I also thought it went well with Z-Space that you've been talking a lot about lately. We have something called Learn Smart that really put McGraw-Hill over the top. How many of you are familiar with X, oh, the math, what is it? XL math? XL math?
XL math.
Yeah, how many of you are familiar with that? Okay. This is, Learn Smart is very similar to that, other than it does, if a child misses a question, it doesn't set them back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It actually levels the kids out if the kids answer certain questions about science. It will level them out, but it doesn't tell them. The data tracking is unbelievable. I was doing cartwheels over that. I was doing the old data tracking where I pre-tested everything and went through and marked how many times a kid would miss number one, number two, and I would use that to drive my instruction. This is all done for me, and it also gives the student instant feedback. Students can set their own personal goals while looking at the data from their pre-test, the formative assessments. They can see for themselves what they're doing well, what they need to work on, and then they can set goals within McGraw-Hill and see how they progress as well. I think that was about it. Oh, it does provide I- provide I-Step material. Some of the things that I used, I did pull the lesson plans out of this curriculum to use with my class that I have right now, and they were like, wow, this is, this is hard. I don't know if I could do this. And I said, the word is not hard, it's called rigorous. Now, we're going to use it. It provided a lot of rigor in my classroom. I really loved it. It pushed the kids' thinking. It provided a lot of opportunities for conversation, collaboration, creativity. We love it. And I had, I make, Mrs. Weaver said it on the board, and she was impressed with it as well. We had parents, we had staff members. It was a great collaborative time.
Misty, just to make sure that I understood you correctly, there's virtual labs and hands-on labs?
Correct.
Okay, so there's both.
And the price is going to be about $20 per student for the next six years, and that includes everything, everything. There's nothing extra that we really need to buy.
What did you just say? I'm sorry.
You didn't hear me say that?
What did you say on the number?
It's about $20 per student for the next six years.
Well, it's 13 for the textbook and six for consumables. In comparison, last year, our seventh grade was 14 for the textbook and 15 for consumables, so it's actually going to help cheapen our textbook cost at the middle school.
Not cheap, unless it's good.
There you go. Rigorous.
Any other questions that I can answer?
And this lines up with what Riddle is doing and what the high school is doing?
I've actually worked with Pearson before at another school corporation. Pearson does have good curriculum. It does, in my opinion, McGraw-Hill pushes, at this level, at the middle school level, pushes the thinking a little deeper. And again, I spoke with the high school teachers, looking to see what they were looking for, how we could kind of mirror and gel our curriculum with theirs.
And we're a little apples and oranges, because Riddle is not, I mean, what portion of the day, and then portion of the year are you able to teach science, where Mrs. Kreip has every day for full class periods, so to meet...
So we just want something that flows, you know, that prepares them for the next, the next building.
That's true, but that's less of an issue with this than in maybe some other.
And again, I've worked with Pearson curriculum, and in my opinion, I think that it would gel nicely. In Pearson, there is journal entry, there's collaborative skills, there's 21st century skills. They do have some online opportunities with Pearson, which goes along with McGraw-Hill. So when those fifth grade kids come in and sixth graders, it's not like a shock to them. They will have a lot of background knowledge with the technology and the virtual labs and the journal entries, and they'll be able to adapt to that quite quickly.
Good. Thank you.
And we have a high school?
We do.
And before we do that, is there any objection, including the high school in with the Riddle and middle school? And we'll just do them together?
At the high school, we were not able to get all of our content, our science content areas through one company, because we are offering some different elective level sciences next year. So we have about half of our texts coming from McGraw-Hill and about half coming from Pearson. We went with both of those. With Biology I, we were really happy with the textbook that we had. So instead of purchasing new books, what we're going to purchase is the E-edition, so every student can have an E-edition. And we are getting a classroom set of textbooks that utilize the same vocabulary and content, but it's at a lower lexi level for our students that have struggled in biology. We feel sometimes that's because the text is too hard, not because they can't understand the content. So that's what our biology will be. That's through Pearson. Also through Pearson, we're getting environmental science, AP chemistry, and our health textbooks. Through McGraw-Hill, we'll be getting our integrated chemistry and physics, Chemistry I, Physics, Earth and Space Science, and AP Zoology textbooks. All of those, we're getting a classroom set of textbooks and E-editions for all students to help minimize the cost transferred to our students. So our cost range, $13 up to $20 in our normal level classes, and then our AP level classes will be $29, and that's because they're utilizing an AP level textbook, which are more expensive to purchase.
Adam, is the biology the only class that had the ability to have a class set with a lower lexi level?
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Strasser? Is there a motion to approve the science textbooks adoption for Riddle, Middle, and the high school?
So moved.
Moved by Sandy.
I second that.
Seconded by Steve, all in favor of approving the science textbook adoption for chemistry schools, signified by reasonable rating, please. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, teachers, administrators. Thank you, guys, for putting in the time. Sincerely, I know it's long, and Mrs. Weaver did tell me. So, and I know the time it takes, but we're willing to appreciate it, and thank you very much. And I know you're all nervous about this, but you shouldn't be. You all did a good job. Onto student? I'm sorry. Oh, okay, yes. That means if you would like to leave, please go for your duty, you're not going to...
They're all looking at you.
Especially the little ones. Brody's over there like, hey, we got to go.
I love that it's a family thing.
Thank you. Onto student technology handbook policies, device repair form.
There are just a few changes that Scott has to share with you and talk to you about in regards to the device, the repair form and the handbook in regards to the new adoption of the iPads that we just went through, and the fact that the cost to repair MacBooks is going down since they are older.
Tell you what, I'm going to get my exercise and go surely to the mini K-ness.
We'll sign you up.
Yeah.
He's on video now.
Here are the good costs for repair and the cost of the form we send them in for repairs, the cost for pretty much everything. We used to have like one, two, three, six different on our old form, because we had iPad twos, iPad threes, iPad fours, errors. But now we just have one iPad to do iPad five, since we're going to be updating. And these are the updated costs for repair for like the screens and everything. I'm trying to think. Screens are, stay about, they bumped up to, from 65 to 97, obviously because of brand now. Um, like, cases, they were $44, the case for these are now $80. Um, chargers went from, uh, $9 to 15. Cables, uh, the charging cables were, went from almost $6 to $10. Um, but we're gonna try to utilize a lot of these older ones that we had, so, um, that should keep some of the cost down for some of these kids that, um, will have, like, we should have a bunch of spares left. Um, and for, like, the middle school, uh, they'll have keyboards, so that's why keyboard was added. Um, and we're getting a set for actually Riddle School, too. Um, then there's a cover, a foot cover on these new ones, so those are about $15. Um, the cost for your MacBooks, um, they came down. The screens are still the same, um, but some of the other prices, like chargers, they came down from, like, $40 to $30. Um, and actually, the replacement, it used to be about $850, down to $320 now. It was like, uh, totally ran over or something like that. So these are the updated costs for this next coming year.
I have a question about wording. Um, it's actually in this section. We have, in section 7.3, um, it says, about the third sentence, "If the device is lost, stolen, or totally damaged as a result of irresponsible behavior, the parent or student may be responsible for the full replacement cost." And then in 7.5, it says, "A student or guardian will be responsible for cost due to damage or loss." So I would respectfully ask that we make it both may.
Absolutely. And once you do try to give administration the opportunity to look into and investigate those incidents if they happen, so absolutely.
Any more comments or questions for Mr. Kissler? In that case, is there a motion to adopt the student technology handbook policies, device repair form, with the addendum changing, changing those to may instead of must?
So, uh, changing it from will to
To may. Very well. And that, you're, you did make, you did make a motion to
Yes.
Motion by Jenny?
Second.
Seconded by Sandy, all in favor of approving the technology handbook policies with those changes, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. The Riddle traffic flow pattern?
We have had, um, concerns brought to us when we talk about being good neighbors and, and working with those around us. Riddle has had a tremendous, um, backflow of traffic, both in the morning and in the afternoon time, a dismissal. In fact, we've had incidents, and Skeeter, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had incidents where, um, ambulances weren't able to get to homes because the road was so blocked, and that happened to be at dismissal time, and that was a concern getting to that home. Um, we've also had other emergencies as they're trying to get through, or people getting locked into the traffic and not being able to back out and get out to appointments and things that they need. So I've asked, um, uh, Skeeter to look at this and to work with Luke in regards to it. Don came on late. We were working as much as we could with transportation, and so I know Skeeter's had a lot of conversations with Ken Long about a way to help open up that traffic flow, try to provide a little more safety in regards to what Charlie tries to do out there on that road and the dismissal of those students. So Skeeter, if you could walk everybody through some of your proposed changes to help with the traffic flow, to open that road up before and after school.
The green arrows are the, is Barkman Avenue, Barkman Drive, that runs in front of the school. What, what we'd like to do is next year is we shut that down in the morning for a period of time, to let the buses come in off of Third Street and get in front of the school and kind of park at an angle to unload their students, and also do this, and run the parents around the backside of the school, the north side of the school, and come around to the south side of the school at the fifth grade door to unload, uh, the students, the car students that time. And in the afternoon, same thing, that street will be shut off for a period of time, four or five buses in at a time, pick up their students, and they, and they shoot out. Parents will come in from the, uh, north side, go around the west side, and end up at the fifth grade door, and pick up their students in the afternoons also. Um, right out the fifth grade door, we're gonna remove three of the parking lots and put the handicap bus right there, so that those kids can route that door and ride onto the bus and exit that way. That's the plan. We, I mean, Charlene's always running down Third Street trying to get numbers and stuff like that. We're hoping to double line, parent pickup behind the school, and come in there and pick up, get a double line and get them flowing. They'll keep the gate closed until 2:30. The, the north gate, the northwest gate will be closed until 2:30, and then parents can come on in and start picking up, and start lining up there at the fifth grade door to retrieve their students.
And you say two lines?
Two lines. If we can get three, we'll try it.
Hopefully eliminate that line from Barkman down to Fulton Avenue.
Well, we're hoping to eliminate the line from, yeah, Fulton, clear back to the backside of the school there, the northwest side of the school. Hopefully we get more in, that flow of traffic in behind the school.
It is becoming just really concerning, where getting phone calls, parents are lining up, Luke, correct me if I'm wrong, but early, it's two, ten after two, sometimes, and, and just blocking those roads, and it's making it really difficult for those people who live along those routes to be able to get in and out as they need to. They've all been polite and respectful, but just showing that concern that that does cause a huge backflow of traffic twice a day for them.
And the buses will angle apart, so that way there's one lane left open for any emergency vehicles that need to get through there.
Right.
It won't change Barkman southbound one way or anything?
No, we're not changing any of that. It's all gonna come in, the buses are gonna come in from, off of Third Street, park in their angles, and then exit out Fourth Street.
Did we need to contact the city with anything, with signage, or?
Already contacted Andy. Um, this time he says, we just need to let him know what we need.
Skeeter, one thing, um, this is the first I've seen, what you're talking about here. One thing that I can see could be a problem is, if you wanna turn the buses off of that on the Fourth Street there, uh, the size buses we have and everything, that could be a tight turn right there. We're gonna have to make sure that people don't park
On that one side of the street.
On both sides of that street, so we can, so we can make our swing to get out of there.
Yeah, I think the longest bus is 70 feet. Is that right?
Yes.
Can I maybe get down the weeds here a little bit? Instead of staging to the strategic level, but the buses, will they park at an angle, pulling in with the lines, or will they back in, contradict the line?
No, they're just, they're just gonna come in, come in on, off of Third Street, on the Barkman, and it's kind of angled.
And then back in?
Nope.
At this point?
They can just pull on out as they go.
From a traffic crash perspective, and go ahead, Don.
There'll only be five to six buses there at a time, because we pick up at Riddle, and we're all, we're picking up at Riddle, we're picking up Columbia, and then they, then they switch. So we're only gonna have so many, they'll just pull in, I can see from this picture, they're gonna pull in on an angle, so their door's gonna be pretty close to the, to the side block, and not too far away from it there.
That makes sense. I was looking at it from a crash perspective, most of your backing, or most of your crashes are from backing
Right.
At your Walmarts and stuff, so I didn't know if it's easier when you pull in somewhere to back in right as you're driving, just a thought. I'm sure you guys are on that.
And Wendy's already prepared a letter to go out at the end of this school year for returning students for next year about how that's going to work.
Is that something that's advanced, maybe we could incorporate at student sign-ups, so parents have a map of that? I, you're never gonna get everybody, I realize that, but if we make every avenue we can to let people know, put on a website.
We would have our own sign, as part of the enrollment, we can have that listed, if the students get on, there's, we're not gonna do, um, all of our enrollment will be done online, but we can most certainly put those announcements, announcements out and utilize our media resources, and, and it's a perfect time to, to start communicating that out and have all some to do so. And it's gonna be a lot like the parking lot issue at the high school, it's gonna kind of have to be trial and error, and see what the various students, things we need to tweak, but what we're really trying to do is to help eliminate those concerns, um, legitimate concerns from the neighbors in that area in regards
Hopefully I'll take a lot of the backlog off Third Street.
There's a lot of pressure there from the others, two o'clock, 1:30 on, actually.
Yeah, that's the way it is at Columbia.
I think that this is a good opportunity to, to, like you shared about the high school and about Columbia, to communicate that to our parents, that may, maybe it's been a few years since we've communicated that, so that they know what the, what the plan is.
Any questions for Officer Doherty?
Good man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Skeeter, for the time you put into that. Is there a, I'm sorry, I just, I forgot, thank you for the time you put into student policy revisions, too. I don't want to be remiss. Is there a motion to approve the Riddle traffic flow, where's it? We need to approve that? I guess we do, it's a concern.
Good idea.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the Riddle traffic flow pattern?
Sound moved.
Moved by Jenny?
Second.
Seconded by Tom, all in favor of approving the Riddle traffic flow pattern, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. MJ Insurance contract?
MJ, um, Insurance has been our representative for the past several years now. I know that Dan, uh, even when I was in the buildings, um, we had MJ and Frank Crossland has been coming in, uh, he does a wonderful job of helping us run comparative costs in regards to our health insurance, um, eye insurance, dental insurance. Our CTA has been part of those conversations. We actually have a meeting scheduled with him tomorrow, again, trying to make sure we are doing what's best fiscally for the district and also for each and every one of our employees around the best insurance options. He's coming in tomorrow to look at the difference between self-insured, fully insured, um, other insurance plans that are out there. And so I would recommend that we continue this agreement. He does a lot of work with, especially with Brenda Troyer, in making sure that we are constantly in compliance with all of the legislative acts and everything else in regards to, um, insurance and those things. It doesn't have anything specific about the cost of insurance moving forward. Those are discussions that are still going on, but this does retain them as our, um, provider moving forward.
My board knocks this one out, so I'm trying to pull it up.
Here's a, I'm talking about
Yeah, if you're looking to opt each to, like, the compensation, this is, uh, right.
Right.
Is that something we wanna put publicly?
I think that's something that we've paid in the past.
Right.
Um, we pay per employee, it's $24 per month, based on 196 employees. We don't have those specific numbers and employees in yet, because we're not sure about next year. Minimum fee of $50,000 if enrollment for the medical plan declines. The $24 fee per employee is payable in monthly installments, with the first installment paid immediately. This is something that has been part of the past contracts, and it's also something that we're talking to Frank about tomorrow, because he knows and understands that, um, should this, should we find better, um, agreements out there, that we will be moving in that direction.
But, okay, I'm confused. Better agreements as in going in with a different insurance?
We are looking at the state insurance plan as well, as a comparative.
So we wouldn't, in that case, we would not use MJ because we wouldn't use them?
We would use MJ for dental and, but then this cost would change.
Okay.
They're a consultant, but they go pretty much like after a market close, and then just compare the cost to us. But it is these costs that, that we're trying to drill down and compare upon.
Yes, 'cause $24 per employee
That's what we've been paying for, I don't know how many years now.
Wow.
What's that?
Five or six years.
Oh, yeah. At least.
Any comments or questions for Jenny?
Mrs. Weber.
So are there other competitors to MJ that, that come to our school and offer their services?
We did that with our CTA about five or six years ago, and they were at this level, best out there in cost comparative. He, Frank knows that we have a lot of concerns around the cost of insurance. As far as other competitors being able to meet that or read that in regards to the $24 per employee, the only thing I know of that would change that would be looking at the state insurance policy that we are investigating tomorrow with them as a consultant.
Has that improved from what it was when they first came out with the state policy? Because then it was a nightmare.
We have reached out to other school districts. In fact, we met with, um, a superintendent from, uh, Whitco Schools, and they have had a lot of good feedback in regards to switching to the state policy. We, um, drilling down just internally, it appears as if moving to the state insurance is going to cost us yet more than what this is, and not provide as much, but the, again, those are the comparatives we're doing, it's just that necessary evil that we're looking into. The other thing is that, I mean, once you make that, um, switch over to the state insurance that we've learned is that you were locked into it
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you don't have the bargaining that we have, uh, available to us through Frank and MJ. And so, uh, our CTA has been in on every meeting, and Clint will be there tomorrow as we look at the difference between self-insured, fully insured, and do comparatives in regards to state insurance.
So you feel that the cost paid to MJ is, at this point, worth the benefit that we receive from MJ?
Yeah. Sandy and Tom were probably both part of those earlier discussions, when they were looking at insurance providers and consultants.
There's a variety of different insurance products. At one time, we had a straight contracted insurance company and agents that took care of it. Uh, that, due to a variety of things, uh, the variety of things we had, it became very expensive. We looked at the two other processes. One would be through MJ, which is a, uh, self-funded program. What MJ does is what the insurance company front office does for us. They are the plan administrator, they pursue the claims, they fight the insurance company, they handle all of that. Uh, but they're not the insurance, because we're, our insurance, uh, to the, uh, capital. The third form is the trust kind of insurance, which the state is, once you're, never get out, and it's, uh, no. Yeah, each has its advantages, each has its disadvantages, but each, each one of them would make that choice because he's very, 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 uh, this was, uh, a choice that was made by the board at a very difficult time, and had multiple medical concerns, had a time when medical insurance rates were, you know, forcing the creation of the Affordable Care Act, so, and we were going through all that at the same time, so I would urge a question, if you were thinking of, not MJ is the best, or anything else, they were the best of the people to talk to at the time, and, uh, professional services, once you get through, to state.
And, and we have, what we're bringing to you is not the recommendation for our insurance package moving forward. We'll know more information after tomorrow's meeting, and we continue with the negotiations with our CTA, but we're trying, we know that this is our hugest impact to general fund other than employees, it's part of that benefit, and, and we're really trying to minimize that, to grow the general fund and to give back to the faculty and staff, but the options are, um, minimal at best.
So, if I understand correctly, this is the fee paid to, fee paid to the consultants, and then there's a premium that we pay for the insurance that we buy separately through them?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, because of the language and compensation, minimum fee per year of $1,000 if you have a decline, uh, I would be somewhat hesitant to table it until I can read, until we got through the strong information, because if we're gonna go someplace else, you don't wanna
Well, that with the meeting tomorrow, we have a lot of desert from pressing the next month, but we can't table it to get, uh, do our due diligence on that. Is there any objection to that?
And it seems like in there, it, as I read it, if it declines, so 195 would be declining, right? So, I mean, there's not much, there's not a grace in there.
We'll table that until next month. Moving on, the Ivy Tech lease agreement.
Um, I have been working with Gloria Carby in regards to the Ivy Tech portion of our building, uh, located just on, uh, the south side of us here. We are proposing entering another two-year lease agreement, which has been the standard lease agreement in the past, the, um, payment-to-remain status quo. Um, it's been a wonderful opportunity for our students. Um, they have provided us hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, of free credits for the students because we're part of that new tech association. Adam has done a wonderful job growing that relationship in regards to the number of courses that are offered, and now the certification next year that we hope to offer, so I would encourage us to continue with this relationship and renew that lease agreement for the next two years.
Is the size, the about payable, you said a status quo, the size that they're using as the, as
Correct. Everything would remain as is. And it's been a really good working relationship. There are times when we need to utilize some of their classrooms, and if they're not in use, they allow us to move over into there for the overflow with no additional charges or, or reimbursements, those types of things. It's been a really good ongoing
Relationship.
But none of, but here's what you just said, we've received a lot of free credits from Ivy Tech.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of free credits. Hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of free credits.
Any questions or comments for Jenny? Is there a motion to approve the Ivy Tech lease agreement?
Move to approve the Ivy Tech lease agreement.
Moved by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Sandy. All in favor of approving the lease agreement? Signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Asphalt bids.
We were waiting on the asphalt bids that Val will take you through. We wanted to make sure that we understood exactly that we would have the approval for the markings of the Riddle traffic flow that played into the bid process, so.
So on these slides that, or bids that we had received on it, we're on a rotation to get our working class really yearly serviced and this year both Columbia and Riddle are up on, as well as the Learning Center are up on rotation this year. So we had two bids that we received quotes for and those are included as well. The recommendation is for DC seal coating is what our maintenance department has recommended. They not only came in a little bit less, but they also have a yearly report established as well where they are familiar with the working operations of what's expected and the quality that's expected as well. But I did appreciate the fact that there was additional interest and intent that was , that was really super.
How is Columbia's going to work with the construction with summer?
We've talked to them in regards to that and it shouldn't interfere with where they're moving the larger equipment in and out of Val verified that with them. And that will be one of the last that they do.
That was one of, actually, it was included in with the bid spec that was advertised and mailed to quite a few even local companies that do this type of work. It was communicated of, hey, you know, we are going to have construction going on and wanted to, A, communicate that as well as B, understand what that collaborative effort would look like and how it would represent. And then even the construction personnel, that's no problem, you know, we can, you know, coordinate, work around it and it seemed to be a nominal issue.
Val, there's one, the one quote has a total of all three together and I didn't do the math and I could have, frankly, I was.
I'm working on it as we speak. I just left since I looked at it up first and you haven't.
Because I just saw the first one, I thought, why the difference? And I realized it was just one building. So for the public and.
Yep, I'm working on it.
So no, the one.
So the DC seal coating altogether is $18,610.
As opposed to?
As opposed to the Q and L seal coating at $22,915. Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny on the spot. I have my calculator in.
And we're comparing apples to apples there. What I looked like to me, because it went out as a spec for the bids, I assume.
Yep. At some point, we're going to need to start talking about replacing the baseline where we can only seal for so many years and then before too long, all there is is cracks for everything to just drip into. So the, some of our topics later on, a few of our programs are going to be resurfaced and build down and re-stuff this set.
We ran into that with high school.
Yeah, the high school would be the largest concern at this point and we're putting that on the, on the plans for capital projects, but the last time they were here, there was a lot of concern around continually down the road that we were going and just real asphalt in there. It's something more had to be done.
I was going to bring that up.
Brad and Jenny oversee it?
Yes, they do.
So, because there's several steps here to make sure it's all being.
Absolutely.
They actually did a really good job of putting those specs together and giving it to you for review and then we know we have to take that.
I know the last time we had the high school done, there were a lot of questions because there was stuff that should have probably been done then that wasn't.
And that's.
So, and maybe it just wasn't in spec.
There was, there was follow-up that was done because I was even out there too of concerns over sealing on when we've got a storm, you know, coming in and stuff. Unfortunately, that storm misses, but even that, those concerns were addressed at the quality and it's literally just, it was not a base for much to adhere to on the, on the top layers.
Right.
When that happened, when you were board members, when that happened, I asked the highway department to come in and knock that with us and at that time, they even shared that it was the best that they could do with what they had as a foundation out there, that it was just getting to the point where we're going to have to tear that all up and put a, put a new foundation in for it. But we were concerned and before we released payment, we did have the highway department come in and they verified it was the best that could be done under the circumstances.
It's been there a few years.
It has, and it takes a lot of traffic. It's a lot that goes on.
It's still the new high school, so it's pretty newy.
Are there any questions for Jenny about the asphalt bids or about, as I should say, comments?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the DC seal coating asphalt bid? Is that correct? Is there a motion to accept that bid?
I'm going to accept the bid with DC seal coating.
Motion made by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. He beat you too. All in favor of approving DC seal coating to do the asphalt at Columbia, Riddle and Building Center? Signify by raising your right hand. Motion carry, or, okay, all opposed. Highest habit, five to one. LED project and next steps.
And I, right now, I'm just seeking, I believe, permission to continue forward. We are looking at trying to alleviate some of the pressures on both capital projects as well as the general fund and one of the ways to do that is through better LED lighting. We're also trying to look into the idea around solar energy at Riddle. We have Terry Thornsberry right now trying to draw up specs for the LED throughout the district and breaking that up by building as well so that we know where we would be in regards to cost and return on the investment. So I'm asking for permission to continue to work with Terry Thornsberry around that and once those come in with his estimates of what it would be, whether or not we need to go through the bid process or the quote process and, and moving forward, we want to keep these as locally as we can and, and work with the community in regards to that. Val and I continue to work on making sure that the funds are there around that and we bring more information to you, but right now I'm just seeking permission to continue to work with Terry to have those specs available to us and then be able to return those, get that out to the community as we work with the community in regards to funding around this.
And the reason behind that is to conserve some of our energy lines.
Absolutely.
So we're not necessarily approving the LED project because we're doing further information into, for the next steps.
Exactly. But just looking on.
Actually, what we're looking for you to do is to approve the administration taking bids if necessary before the next meeting so they bring bids to you for, or in that next meeting. If the matter came come in under quote requirement, allow them to go ahead and open the quotes and then bring in the quotes to you for action. So Terry Thornsberry will come with a recommendation, maybe number, that number may be 120 or maybe 160. We don't know yet. When he comes to you with that number, or comes to the administration with that number through this meeting, the next meeting, they will know if they have to bid it out, send out the specification for Terry, prepare it for them. Then they have to publish it twice, the second time at least 10, at least seven days before the board meeting. And so that means they've got to start in the next 10 days or else they can't get it all done. But they don't want to have to, again, authorize them to go forward. If they come back with an estimate of 120 or 140, then they can simply ask not, not fewer than three people knowing to deal with the product to provide information to Brian to quote to the school corporation and the number that goes to you at the next meeting.
So the motion, is there a motion to take the next steps and allow Terry Thornsberry or the administration to decide whether to receive bids or quotes? Is that the motion I'm asking for?
The motion is to allow the administration to publish or post a requirement and bring, bring proposals to the board next week. And do they can deal with Terry and all that, whether you do want.
I wrote it down Ted, I'm still probably going to ask you. Is there a motion to allow the administration, administration to publish for quotes if required and put them to bring that proposal to us before the next meeting?
Some moved.
Moved by Tom. Seconded by, I saw her hand first, Sandy.
That's fine. That's fine.
All in favor of approving that motion? Signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Embellent sale of salvage items and outbuildings located at 230 West 18th Street as well as surplus equipment.
Absolutely. We are getting ready to have the auction on June 8th. The board approved that in the prior meeting in regards to John Garrett and, and moving forward with that, we did have them in. I also reached out to Jim and to Brad as well as to all of the principals while we have an auctioneer here and on site. Any of those other ticket items that we want to put in for the auction to, to help clear out rooms or space and storage as well as to recap any funds that we might be able to. So those are the surplus items that you're seeing listed there. The one interesting thing may be the two basketball rules that were original to the gym.
The new school.
But there may be, may be somebody with some sentimental interest in those as well, but just asking for permission. They did come and take pictures of the interior of the homes. That was just last week for those who are interested in salvaging as well as those who may be interested in using materials to refurbish the home. But we are gearing up for that open house and that auction.
So are we selling the outbuildings themselves too?
We are.
Selling plastic perhaps?
Well, Mr. Garrett said he would sell anything he could, so he said, you know, we're, we're going to do as much as we can to get, to get that money back before we end up tearing it down.
And then it's June 1st all the time?
June 1st would be the open house for, for anybody to come in and look at the items that are available and to go through the home and to see the interior and the woodworking and the chandeliers and those types of things. And then the auction will be held on June 8th in the evening.
Okay, now who's going to take? I mean, if somebody comes in there and buys the woodwork or the staircase, who takes the thing?
They do. It becomes their property. And that's what we'll talk a little bit about. If, if this is approved, then that brings us to the next item.
Excuse me.
No, because we have those thoughts as well.
She's a gender shark. She's a gender shark for a statement.
Any questions or comments for Jenny? Is there a motion to approve the sale of salvage items and outbuildings located at 230 West 18th Street as well as the surplus equipment? Some moved. Moved by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Sandy. All in favor of approving that sale? Signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Once again, June 1st for open house?
June 1st, the afternoon for open house and the auction will be on the.
I just want to say it twice so.
Absolutely, and we'll continue to advertise it and they've already got it out on their sites as well, the auction there does.
And then since that is approved, the approval, the next one would be the approval of proposed specifications for demolition or structure at the same address.
Correct, and I've had conversations with Ted in regards to this. The concern is, once we have the auction, the auctioneer suggested that we give a 10-day period for the buyers to come in and to remove the items from the home, knowing that a lot of the items will be taken yet that evening because that's typically how those in the salvage business work. But after that, when he is selling windows and doors and those types of things and we have a structure that could become a potential concern, liability there on the property. So we are asking for approval of the proposed specifications, trying to work within the timeline in regards to the auction being on June 8th. The auctioneer stated that the norm is to give those purchasers 10 days to remove the items. We have a board meeting then on June 19th. If we are able to put out the proposed specifications with your approval now, we could bring those bids back to you on the June 19th date and be ready. Part of the specs is to have the tear down started and that we set that date on June 26th?
Yes.
Is that correct? To start the tear down so we don't have that empty structure that is now without windows, doors, those types of things standing. So we need to try to get that out and get those bids going so that we can have the demolition of the home at that point in time.
Well, we have somebody there when the salvage people take their things out.
Well, we talked a little bit about that because that is a concern. We, standard practice, my understanding is, once they bid on it, it becomes their personal items and that we make sure that the home is open between certain hours and we will most certainly utilize Skeeter and others just to do drive-bys and stuff, but essentially that becomes their personal possession and we'll do the best that we can to, to help monitor that, but would not assume full responsibility for it once it's sold.
Does all have a basement?
It does.
Does number one include the basement? And it says all materials associated with structure?
Yes.
Okay, because it could just knock the walls in and cover.
Do we need to change that? It does have a full basement.
It does. Well, let's see, well, and that's where number two came into play for leveling of ground that the home is located on because not only will this include the removal of the structure, which I was, my intent when I was working on this was, all materials associated with the structure would cover the cinder blocks that comprise of the basement. So removal of those cinder blocks as well as, you know, get us the right fill that we need to, to fill in the basement to have a level, a level surface, a level ground once those materials are removed.
As long, as long as that's understood, because you could knock the walls in and still get 18 inches of fill above it.
I've not written a big story like this before, so I am open to suggestions and comments and insights, so it.
Maybe just add that.
Well, I, I read the first paragraph, tear down the removal of home and all material associated with structure, meaning you can't shove your crap in the basement.
Okay, that's why I was asking, does all material associated with structure include basement?
Well, it includes all materials and then it includes the, the foundation down to 18 inches below ground. Below ground, but it would not necessarily include removal of all the basement.
Well, it would.
That's simple. If you make a decent.
Well, if you build in the future, somebody's going to have to deal with that because that'll be down there.
Yeah.
So rather than 18 inches.
Work with Ted to remove the basement as well?
Yeah. Call for removal of basement walls and flooring.
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's a whole concrete basement. Mm-hmm.
He used to do train burns at the fire department, but I don't think he did anymore either.
No, I've got an old farmhouse, nice town, but there about, you want to come out and burn down?
Yeah.
We can't do that anymore.
Well, I didn't.
You have to get, apply at the state, check for asbestos.
Less everything out. I guess I give that.
He said, go ahead and burn yourself.
Yeah. I didn't hear that because I was saying for our SWAT teams to do that stuff too.
I'm not sure a month after we give the city to create the burn ban, but we.
Right. We're probably too soon.
Maybe just a little.
I guess it is in town too, so.
So if we work with Ted around the language, Ted or Rachel around the language for the basement as well?
At my time, I felt more comfortable with the bait because somebody's going to have to deal with it. It's going to be us in the future anyway, so.
Yeah, if you're going to build there in the future, you're going to deal with it because you can cover it up and it'll look nice. If you have to put a foundation for a new building, you're going to be in it.
Right. Well, and that's where I was under the impression of, well, removal of home and all materials associated and that's the foundation.
That's why I asked if that included the basement.
I took it as yes, but then when you get to number two, like you said, it only goes 18 inches down under. So I can, or, so would the suggestion be to remove the, to a depth of 18 inches below grade and just leave it out as leveling of ground that home is located on? Like, once all of the materials in the home are removed, or I'm sorry, once the home and all materials associated with it for number one, once you get the home off and all materials associated with it, meaning the cinder blocks in the basement, concrete, once that's removed, then level the ground that the home, I should say, was located on.
Hey, you'd like to, so Ted, you work with, or you can work with Ted on that.
We'll be specific. We'll uncur our placement walls and board with safe, tear our placement walls and board with carbon all off and bring in fresh filler, pack it down. And the question is, how far do you want them to go?
How far, how deep down is your footage? Three feet? How far?
On the basement wall, it's probably about 18 inches and, you know, because that's already six feet below ground.
Right.
So, but when you say level ground 18 inches below grade, so that means it's going to be a hole 18 inches deep. Because grade. be a hole 18 inches deep, because grade is ground level. So you don't want to be below grade.
That was a suggestion added in, so we can change and update to have, you know, so at the end result, the specs says, take everything out of the basement and level it to where.
Lower off.
Exactly.
Ground level.
Update down accordingly.
Otherwise, we're going to have a pond.
Yeah.
A pool.
Pond to pool, pond to pool for me. Any other comments or suggestions for the bid specifications?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's say somebody bought a window and got hurt taking it out. Is the structure actually covered by the corporation insurance right now? Until it's.
Nice thing about large motion policy is as you add something, this is automatically included in the motion numbers.
Any other questions? So I guess our motion for this, and please interject here, accept the proposed, approval that proposed, approved, proposed specifications for the demolition of the structure at 230 West 18th Street with the addendum or suggestions made by you and Rachel? Is there, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
I second that.
Motion by second, it's by Sandy, well, I'm losing it now.
We are.
We're going too long. Motion by Sandy, second by Steve, all in favor of approving that, the proposed specifications, please signify by raising your right hand.
I've already voted three times.
Motion carries six to zero.
And we'll bring those back to you on the 19th.
Faculty and staff focus, the personnel report. Come on, board docs, don't fail me now. Hiring, Donald W. Meyer is a bus route driver. Brett Heisey is a temporary seventh grade middle school math teacher for Lori Shane for the month of May, starting May 3rd this year. Lauren Mitchell is a Columbia permanent sub for Ryan Halt as he transfers to RMS. Don King as the director of transportation. Russell Dugan as the high school night custodian. Lauren Mitchell as the substitute for Megan Gunnar's maternity leave, second grade, starting August of 2017 through January 29th, 2018 at the earliest. Samantha Butler is the Columbia school nurse. Family medical leave, Pam Brower, Riddle fourth grade, April 1st through August 1st, 2017. Maternity leave, Stephanie Brown, middle eighth grade math. Estimated due date is June 1st, 2017, so 12 weeks from that date, but that, we know is not going to be probably right on the date. I'm sure she hoping it is, but. Resignations, Julian Newcomer, speech-language pathologist for middle and high school, effective at the end of the 2016-2017 school year. Becky Burke, the high school physics and integrative chemistry and physics teacher, effective May 30th of this year. Michelle Wallace, Columbia preschool instructional assistant, effective May 30th of this year. Susan Olmstead, Columbia food service assistant, effective May 17th, 2017. Terminations, Evan Espinoza, high school intense needs instructional assistant, life skills classroom, effective April 19th, 2017. Corey Pruitt, high school instructional assistant, special needs, effective May 9th, 2017. And Mark Turnpaul, middle school building tech, effective May 17th, 2017. For enrichments, spring enrichment, Kylie Dag, Columbia Zoo enrichment, Megan Gunnar, Columbia Zoo enrichment, Bethany Sewell, Columbia Zoo enrichment, and Chris Cox, middle school, Skyzone enrichment trip. For summer intercession, Deb Wolford, high school mathematics, Felix Amandi, high school English, Bethany Sewell, Columbia, first grade, Amy Banks, Columbia second grade, Kylie Dag, Columbia kindergarten, Michelle Walters, Columbia IA, Leslie Stram for Riddle, Mona Zion for Riddle, Megan McLaughlin for Riddle, Tracy Monical for Riddle instructional assistant. Summer high school, Tony Stasiak for government, Trevor Brown for English, Justin Pearson for SAE, Joel O, or cabinet making, Health, Katie Felkey and Amy Blackburn, PE, Brian Hooker, algebra, Lori Williams and Deb Wolford for two weeks, and Felix Amandi for two weeks. For Columbia, summer reading program coordinator, Lauren Atkinson. For Columbia, summer reading program, Amy Banks. Columbia? Okay. Let's make sure I had it right.
Well, the, the summer readings program was something that we used to do, do through the Duke Energy Grant monies that we spoke about. It was such a beneficial program that we, I believe I shared with the board just a few months ago, that if we continue to keep that reading program and, and maintain the integrity of the program, but tried to lessen the amount that we spent in regards to the grant, so that is why we tried to bring somebody with their administrative license, and we need to congratulate Lori, she's just now completing her administrative license. Have you taken your test?
I have.
You have, still waiting on the results?
I passed.
You could.
Congratulations.
Good chance.
So trying to grow administrators internally, so she's taking on that reading program. But because the Duke Energy Grant at one time had certain restrictions about the age levels that we could teach, now that we're going to house that on our own, we have more flexibility in the students that we are going to service in regards to that, so that's why you're going to see some different names, trying to track it by reading abilities and include more students across the district that need it, rather than being confined to the restrictions of the grant.
So is it all going to be K through two students, or I see some Riddle teachers on there, so is it going to be some other students?
It's just kindergarten first and second grade students that just finished. So we do have, we just met today, and we do have a group of those higher kids that are going into third grade that are going to do some iReeD practice, but it is kindergarten first, second grade students. As of today, we have 65 kids signed up.
Lori has her budget. She came to Jason and myself last week and said it can't be done. So Lori, welcome to administration, this is what you have to work with, so she's been having those meetings, and I trust that they're going well, and she'll stay with her now.
I've just, I'm used to Lori Aggison RMS, not.
Sure, sure, yeah. I'm trying to grow other administrators here in the district.
Following up with Lori Aggison, Columbia summer reading program coordinator, Columbia summer reading program, Amy Banks, Kylie Dag, Sally Dunwood, Amy Freeman, Bethany Sewell, Leslie Strum, Sarah Dalton, and for the iReeD-3 program, Mona Zion and Megan Schroed. Okay, and there's another sheet, I don't know. Ah, here we go. Sports resignation, Carmen Reeves, the jumping coach, the assistant coach for boys and girls varsity track team.
I had a question on Stephanie's maternity leave. Is that, since she's due at the end of the school year, is that 12 weeks after the baby is born, or is that the first 12 weeks of the school year?
Stephanie is guaranteed to have her baby Thursday at this point.
But my question is, and I'm honest, she is a grand date. Is that, is her maternity leave, is she taking it from that point for 12 weeks, or the first 12 weeks of next school year?
I believe she's planning to return in August.
Okay, so 12 weeks after the baby is born.
As far as I know, but. I can find out, I don't know if I'm sure.
It was all going to be dependent on when the baby was born.
Well, let's make it easy for her. Why don't we just say, after Mr. Hawes finds out, unless you have an issue with that? Or the board has an objection?
No, not an objection, I was just confused the way.
Sure, I think, I think we can't do that when we're on the people business, so. Can we do that?
Federal losses is not your call.
Well.
How's that?
Perfect. Absolutely perfect. Is there a motion, I'm not, Ted, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as given? Jenny made the motion to approve. Second by Sandy, all in favor of approving personnel report, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Brad, may I mention one thing before we move on to the personnel report? She was not part of our retirement tonight, because she, this is her second retirement from us, but I wanted to give Mrs. Newcomer more than, than just reading her name right there, because what an asset she has been to our corporation, and our lives would not be the same without her, so I really appreciate her.
She's not here, but I've heard nothing but positive things about her, so I'd like to congratulate her on her second return.
Yes, well deserved.
And maybe she'll come back.
I think she may get a Dan McCarthy bumper sticker.
I mean, Ron's still working, so maybe she'll just decide that she wants to come back.
And if, if we could, I would like for Don King to take this opportunity to introduce himself and just give just a few moments, he's waited patiently back there, and I told him this is an exception to our board meeting, but Don, if you'd like to stand and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your.
I'm Don King, and I want to tell you, I appreciate the opportunity to come to Rochester and serve up here and the capacity and transportation director. I've been affiliated with Caston Schools for 30, for 21 years down there, working there. This is quite a move for me, I've been in the buses department down there, as well as the maintenance, and doing lawn care, and the sports fields and everything, so I'm happy to get in this part of it up here and be head of the transportation and work with the buses and the drivers and Skeeter and, and in conserving transportation, so I'm quite excited about it, I've got one weekend, I came back for week number two. Today was a good day also, so I've been very, very well received up here. I've been coaching girls' basketball in the eighth grade level up here for 12 years, as well as driving buses for subbing routes and extracurricular activities, so I know several of the people studying in here, and I appreciate the opportunity. My wife is L. U. King, she coaches cheerleaders at Caston. We've been married for 44 years this fall, and she's very supportive of me taking this move at this time in our lives, and, and we thought it was a great idea, a great move for us. We have one son, Jeff, he's 39 years old, and he said, Dad, it's the best thing you've done except with your married mom, so. I didn't have any problems with Caston or anything down there. This opportunity presented itself to me, and I thought it was a move I wanted to make, and I'm very excited about being here with you both in Rochester.
Well, Don, and now I'm welcome to Rochester.
Thank you.
Bless his heart, he went through two, three, two and a half rounds of interviews?
Yes. I still can't get the maintenance out of him, because he wanted the leaf blower today to take care of the backyard. Your transportation.
We have a snow day since. We get a snow day now.
And I know he's working diligently, we have inspections coming up just in another week.
Inspections are June 1st and June 2nd.
And so working diligently with the drivers to get those buses ready.
Steve, police guys are hard, I know, Don.
I know the guys, it's coming pretty well, so I've been around at Caston for a long time, so I think we'll be, we'll be okay.
I'm sure you will. Superintendent's business.
Just a reminder, the board members at this Wednesday, we are serving breakfast to all of the buildings, so I know that they are anxious to come out and be with the faculty and staff in each of the buildings. Next, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, will be the senior breakfast, where members are welcome to attend that, it starts at 7:00.
Correct.
So please feel free to come out and see that, and then we have graduation rehearsals after that, so that's kind of a bittersweet and fun time while they're trying to capture all that energy and, and get them organized to get through the ceremony. June 2nd is graduation, and then I had made a note as well to reiterate the open house of the property on June 1st and the auction on June 8th.
What time should we be there on Wednesday morning?
Wednesday morning, PD starts at 7:30 in the morning.
7:30.
Is there any public?
Hopefully, I won't be the only one there this week.
Yeah, you showed up last week. Good Wednesday. Good heart, good intentions, wrong date.
But they didn't beat me.
Newly for the graduation, we have a study session, and we won't do that this time, so we're just going to show up and wing it?
No, I have actually spoken with Brad, I need to send out, I'm trying, we are hoping to have a board meeting possibly this Friday. We'll send that out in regards to insurance, the competitive bids around insurance. We'll have some personnel that we need to take care of in regards to changes to summer school that we need to make, and hopefully to talk about those things, but I'll send out a doodle with, with possible dates and times, and we could even, Val and I will look at the schedule, look at Friday afternoon, and possibly, I don't know if Tuesday will be too late, we, we're seeking those competitive bids and our insurance contract rules over on June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
This Friday or next Tuesday?
We're looking at meeting this Friday if we can, we still have time to post it on Wednesday.
I'm hoping for next Tuesday, but I understand you, I think it's nice. That's why you're the superintendent. Is there any public comment? Any questions, comments from the board? Is there any further urgent business to discuss? That case we considered being a joke.